The meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for Ames for January 11th, 2023. I am Chad Snyder and the vice chair sitting in for Leva Omar, who is the chair. First order of business, the zoning board of adjustment is a quasi judicial board created by the city of Ames. The board's purpose is to decide on applications for home occupation permits, special use permits, exceptions and variances zoning ordinance, applications for conditional use permits in the floodplain, requests for reasonable accommodation because of a handicap and appeals of decisions of the zoning enforcement officer. As a board of the city, we welcome all testimony. We make our decisions based on the facts and evidence as allowed under city code and presented in our open meeting. Testimony before the board must be given under oath or affirmation. If the proceedings become lengthy, we may ask that testimony be focused on new facts or evidence not already presented. We ask that you come to the microphone if you wish to speak so that your testimony will be audible and may be recorded. For speaking, please complete an orange information card and hand it to the recording secretary. When you are testifying, please address your remarks remarks to the board. We also ask that proceedings be orderly. The zoning board of adjustment is an independent volunteer board of citizens. We are not part of the city administration. We were served in our efforts tonight by Vicky Fieldmeyer, who is assistant city attorney. Kelly Deepman plan Kelly's not here tonight, sorry. By Justin Moore and Ray Anderson, city planners and Renee Hall is recording secretary. The order of proceedings will be for each item. On the agenda, apart from the minutes that will do an oral statement from city staff regarding issues and procedural steps for that item. Then we'll take testimony and evidence from the applicant if they wish to. Third, we'll take testimony from members of the audience who wish to speak. Don't forget your little orange card. And then we'll give the applicant a chance to rebut any comments or arguments that are made. And finally, as we progress, the board will finally then discuss the evidence and come to a decision. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of meetings of the minutes for November 9th, 2022. So those members that were present. Anyone wish to make a motion to approve the meeting of the minutes from November 9th, 2022?
Move approval.
And motion by Bowers?
I'll second.
Second by Patton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, the minutes are approved. Second agenda item for tonight is the a application for a flood bay plane. Easy for me to say flood plane conditional use permit for 403 Highland Avenue. Justin, I think you've got that right.
Yep, thank you. So the application for the conditional use permit this evening is from Hunzucker Construction Services on behalf of the owner. The property owner is DJ GH LLC requesting the conditional use permit. This is for a alternative method of elevating a new residential, in this case multifamily housing structure that's located in the floodway fringe overlay district at 403 Highland Avenue. So on the map there, you can see the hatched property is is 403 Highland. Highland is over here, so it's the L shaped property here. And I'll give you just a scan down here, little better idea kind of of what we're talking about in terms of the floodplain on the property. So you see this lighter outlined area here where I'm kind of running the mouse. That is the floodway fringe. That's the 100 year edge of the 100 year floodplain. In that area, the ordinance does permit the construction of homes and buildings, provided that they are designed to the flood protection requirements in chapter nine. The darker blue outlined area, that is the regulatory floodway. And that is where development is highly restricted. Or in some outside instances can be approved on a limited scale, subject to city council approval, but that those are very, very limited uses. So the majority of all construction activity in the floodplain in Ames tends to take place in this fringe area, which is again, the lighter colored area that you see there. So the request tonight is for the construct, the a conditional use permit to allow an alternative means of elevating this three unit multifamily building, which will have parking located below the building or actually below the living area of the building. And I'll pull that up here. So what you're seeing here is just a footprint. But this rectangular structure here, there's three units. So this is a unit and each unit has three parking spaces underneath, hence the the lines here. So there's three spots here. There's another unit here with three spots. And then up here at the north end, there's the final unit with three stalls. And that line right there, this this light gray line is the edge of the floodplain. So this portion here is the portion of the building that is impacted by the floodplain at this site specifically. So the reason for requesting an alternative or a conditional use permit for the alternative design from the applicant as they describe in their application is that the there's a required amount of fill, obviously, for a distance of 18 feet out from a residential structure. Normally, when a residential structure is constructed, the lowest floor, the bottom of the lowest floor has to be built to our elevation standard. So in the city of Ames, that is base flood elevation plus three feet, BFE plus three. So in in that case, whenever you have a residential structure, you have to put fill around that residential structure outward 18 feet to a height of BFE plus three as well. And that is for, in the event of a flood, residents need to be able to walk out and be reasonably safe from flooding while they wait to be rescued. Now you would, in this case, we have a pretty small portion of floodplain here. There are instances where this sort of thing is is needed when you're entirely within the floodplain, which is really where the standards emanate from or originate from. But in this case, since a part of the building is in the floodplain, it would apply to the perimeter of the building to the west, north, south and and east. In this particular case, the developers proposing the building per zoning requirements at the eight foot setback from the west property line. The 18 foot standard in chapter nine of the floodplain ordinance and on up through the the DNR standards and such require 18 feet regardless. So in other words, if you don't have the property to make 18 feet, you either have to work something out with the property owner or you can't make the 18 feet because you have to go out 18 feet regardless of where your property line is. In this case, they're eight feet away. So the request is being made, which is allowed in in the ordinance for an alternative design. And so what they've chosen to do in this particular case is provide an alternative design by way of what I term in in the report here for you as an extended foundation wall. Let me zoom in here just so you can get a much closer look at this. But basically, what you're looking at here is the east elevation. So you're looking at, if you were standing to the east, this is where the drive aisle would be just to the east. These are open garage areas where you'll drive in and park where the tenants will. And what you're looking at to the back is that wall of the building. So here's the west foundation where the wall is closest to you. And in this particular case, this is called an extended foundation wall. It's built into the design of the wall of the building. So the living units will be up here above based upon the data that I've got from the engineer and my own information in the flood insurance rate map elevations. They are proposing to construct this above the BFE plus three level. They're about 12 feet above BFE plus three. And by that, I mean the bottom floor of this upper, this living area here. Garage area, open garage area for parking in this particular case is permitted at ground level. And paving for parking can be located below BFE, provided that all other floodplain development standards have been met. So this is the the choice of the applicant. They've elected to provide this alternative design standard. They are providing for the openings in the wall in the area susceptible to flooding, which is the portion of the building within the floodplain. And this is the north elevation. So they have one six 16 by eight inch opening right up here on the north foundation wall of the building. And basically what this opens into, there'll be a screen in that. What it opens into is the garage area. And that sits one foot above grade right there. And then also in the west side of the building, there is an opening 16 by eight. And then to the east, the garage door is fully open. Otherwise, if there were a wall here, there would need to be a third opening here or an equivalent number of openings in this wall. So with the amount of opening area with the open garage and the two openings in the north and west that they are providing, I have found that they do meet the required opening space for water to pass through in the event of a flood that would reach up and impact this portion of the building. And that's to alleviate the hydrostatic pressure on the walls. So that in the case of a really aggressive flood, you don't have pressure and damage to the building. The whole purpose of the National Flood Insurance Program is to see structures built to protection standards to minimize damage and thereby minimize the vulnerability of the program so that it can be solid. And so that's what it's intended to promote in addition to public safety for for life and property in general. So I think that that describes really the physical situation on the property and what the developers proposing. A final point I will make, they are proposing an elevated balcony right here, which is also at that 12 foot above BFE. That will, there'll be one staircase here on the north side, which is where the mouse is. That staircase will come down and hit the ground outside of the floodplain. And then the same down here to the south at the south end of the building toward Oakland. It'll come down well outside of the floodplain there. So if there would ever be water that would impact the northwest side of the building, they would residents would be able to walk out above the water and exit outside of the floodplain. Also, the access to the site here on the site plan, the this is Oakland down here. All of this motorized wheeled access is outside of the floodplain. So you don't get into the 100 year floodplain actually until the very edge of the this north parking stall right here. And then, of course, the northwest corner of the building is in it. So motorized vehicles do have access to the building outside of of floodplain. We have in there the elements or the sections of chapter nine, which apply to the conditional use permit. There are 12 findings that the board makes in there. We did put comments for you in there. And then we made some findings of facts and conclusion there after that. There are nine of those. And those are just the observations from staff based on what the applicant's engineer has proposed and provided for us as well as the data that we have on the on the floodplain there. So our alternative, or I'm sorry, our recommendation then tonight, after reviewing the materials that have been submitted and the building plans that came with the site plan are alternative number one, which is to approve the conditional use permit. And I think with that, that'll conclude my presentation so I can answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Thanks, Justin. Any questions for staff?
I don't.
The applicants here, if you'd like to make a statement, please come forward. State your name and address and and we'll swear again.
That Justin Dodge, Hunzucker Companies, 105 South 16th Street.
You swear affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
All right, as the applicant, just whatever you want to cover in addition to what the staff just shared.
Yep. So appreciate everybody being here. Thank you, board. Met a lot of thanks to city staff for for working through a lot of different iterations on this project. There's an overlay in this area, so West University Impact. So that's why all the doors on the units all face out to Oakland. So we've got that limitation that that we've got to balance. And then there's also the zoning. So we've got density require or density, minimum density requirements we've got to meet. Then as part of that, we've also got parking requirements that we have to meet. And so after a lot of different iterations, this is something that found that balance between all those different requirements. And so.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge.
That's where we're at.
Questions for the applicant from the board?
I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of the public want to come forward and make a statement? You have your orange card? Ma'am, if you can present your orange card to. You state your name and address for the.
I am Marilyn Colash. My address is 2817 Oakland Street.
Colash, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Okay, you may proceed.
Okay. My husband and I have, my husband's Joseph, he's just freshly 80 years old. We've lived there for 42 years. You might ask, what am I doing living next to such a high density apartment? I was not even 30 years old. I met the man, the house came with him. He was working at Iowa State and he enjoyed working there for many years. Who would have guessed that so many years we would be happy in a place next to our one housing, next to our high density housing? But I can say tell you that the legacy of the Hunzickers is exceptional in this community and so civic minded. And I'm going to get emotional if I say too much more. It can't be overstated what good neighbors they've been. Thank you to the board because you're volunteers, right? Doing this city staff, Justin and Cesar and Liz Calhoun called me today, talk about some things. So the issue, and I forgot my pointer, Andy, if you could bring it up here for me. The first issue to understand about this property and about this proposal is something that I discovered over these 42 years and not right away. I'm going to point to a corner here.
That building right there.
That corner is the corner of 509 Highland. When we first moved there, all of those properties were Hunzucker and Furman. And then when the Hunzucker boys got older, the property split off. Furman has the two multi unit buildings with all the hard surface. Hunzucker has or had until the demo a couple summers ago. Or last summer, I get not this year, but the previous summer. The demo.
That building and that building are gone now. This has been an empty area. This lot, the driveway and this.
Have all been, am I being recorded? Okay, I better not move too much then. Those parking lots were all gravel for all. About the proposed building in three units, not on top of each other with one roof, but three units adjacent to each other, which will greatly reduce the previous surface of that whole area. And then the driveway and the parking lot on the building to the east, I imagine are going to be hard surface as well. So you can see that probably quadruple pentupple, the amount of hard surface area is going to be coming into this area right next door to my backyard, which has of all the properties on Clear Creek Watershed. In the recent increase of widening of the Clear Creek Watershed, I think our property is one of the highest increases so that it's coming pretty close to our back door. I should talk a little more about that downspout on that 509 Highland, the Furman building. I guess it's Fitch now that owns it. That downspout exits to the west over top of the Furman's or the Hunzickers backyard. For many, many years, I wondered, you know, and we garden.
We have a garden back there. You can almost faintly see it.
And tomato plants used to move quite a lot after a big rain. And I finally just gave up. We made a trench along the backside of the garage that's to the east of there. And I could see that water was washing over the Hunzucker parking lot. Gallons and gallons. What to do about that? I mean, you're supposed to allow water to drain, right? I read that in some code somewhere. Well, then after the demolition happened, somebody got their got their vehicle hung up on.
They were driving out here and they came up here and they wanted to get out. I think she was having a bad day. She got her vehicle hung up.
And there's actually an opening from the 509 building. All the water from the northwest corner of the roof there is washing over that Hunzucker back lot where they're planning to hoping to put this building. Now I can really see how putting a building there is going to save us from getting some water. But is the water just going to get funneled down around the back? And will it enter our garden anyway? So in talking with Liz Calhoun today, we were talking about where are the downspouts on the 515 building? Well, those, most of them go to the north or the two north ones go to the north, the ones in the south go to the south. And hopefully that north building is washing northwards. Somewhere in the past 10 or 15 years, Highland Avenue was raised up. Used to be when we would drive up to the mall, go north on Highland after a rain, there'd be plenty of silt. And you'd say, wow, the water washed over the road and it kept us from flooding so much. But since this road went up, we got more flood in our backyard. Now let's talk a little bit more about the drainage that's happening out to the street. Visiting with Cesar and Justin referred me to Cesar. And apparently, all of the requirements are being met for controlling the water going out onto the street with this plan. But let's look at the plan more closely. The water that goes down that street goes to storms were right here. That's the opening. Actually, there's openings here and here. But this, let's see, Tryonowski's, this lady here and her husband, Kim Professors, retired now. They don't, from their living room window, they don't see much water going down those south drains. They're very worried that the water going into their drain in front of their house isn't going to take it all and flood their basement. When my husband was younger and this would happen, he would go out with a rake and he knew where the grate was and he'd have his boots on. He'd pull the cardboard, the leaves, the twigs off of the grate so the water would go down. Well, when that last storm happened, I forget what year, the one where there was a stationary front over top of Ames. It was going from like 10 PM until 1 AM and it just rained and rained and rained. So we watched that intersection fill up. And I went out there, my husband's older, I went out there with the rake. Let's get that, let's, let's do what my husband did, get that trash off of the grate. Well, there was no trash there. The grate was not able to take it in fast enough. Okay, let's talk about the backyard a little bit. This opening here goes this way and meets the creek at that point, which is the southernmost point of Clear Creek on that section of Oakland Street. There have been problems there to the tune of the end of the drain tunnel is kind of corroding, eroding, breaking off something. Tryonowski's have, the folks at 2901 have had people from the city come out and look. I think John Joyner knows a little bit about it. But so far, all they've done is put orange pylons on there. And I talked a little bit with Liz Calhoun about the CIP Capital Improvement Project or Program. Something in there about was supposed to be Clear Creek stabilization happening north of Oakland. The only spot north of Oakland that I can see where stabilization has been done already was perhaps in the park, the trail going to Mun Woods where between Franklin Avenue and Oliver Circle, they've had to move the path and stabilize that bank a little important for safety of people using that trail. We do, we're grateful to see that. But now the Capital Improvement Project for Clear Creek for 1920 or 2022 to 2027 states that they're going to be stabilizing Clear Creek where? West of North Dakota. There's no more mention of Oakland Street. So I maybe have a better idea. I hope you're open to better ideas here. The property that's the Greenville beyond that's owned by the Forest Hills Neighborhood Association. Mike Guffey is the person that receives the mail for that. I had this idea, I don't know, Justin, can you move the map a little so we can see? Move it down this way? And over this way?
Green, green subway boundary clear over to here.
I, I can.
Has anymore?
I don't have it. Yeah, not with this map. I'm sorry.
You see how this dips down here? Well, this creek, if you went back further this way, then if you did a channel modification, you could get, you could get that creek, a channel cut in there. Dig it deep enough so it takes some pressure off of this storm drain here. See all of these branches of, these are tall trees that the DeRachel built. And wetness there. And this is a, an MTR, Mike Robinson. It's a rental property. I have seen college girls, you know, they get drunk on Friday nights too. They're out here with their cell phones walking along for light. And here are the orange pylons marking the broken end of the storm drain that Tryonowski's have been asking for some help to be done on. So to relieve some of the pressure off of these buildings that are proposed here, I'm suggesting that this, the suggestions for okay, page 99. You know, Justin pointed out all these very specific things that you have to follow and was sharing that he thought maybe this plan could meet all of them. But in addition, there are factors upon which the decision of, I'm reading section A. Factors upon which the decision of the board shall be based in passing upon requests. You go now down to number nine. Should base it on the relationship of the proposed development.
Should base it on the relationship of the proposed development to the comprehensive plan and floodplain management program for the area. Now, I would point out that our area has some uniqueness to it because it's bounded by this storm drain exit here. Which exhausts water from the uphill of Campus Avenue, from the uphill of Oakland Street, what isn't catch by other, caught by other storm drains. And then also, you've got the pressure coming from the Clear Creek watershed, which as you know, goes clear into Boone County. So if you get a long rain in Boone County, you got a lot of pressure on that system and the end of that storm drain. If you look at photographs, and we have some of this area before there was any development there, do you know what it was? It was an ice skating rink for the Victorian college kids with their big hoop skirts and their buggies. There wasn't any street, no curb, the hard surfaces weren't in place, and that was just left to be a big area. So this is like a confluence of the storm drain and this Clear Creek, which can get pretty powerful and, you know, flood as it does. There needs to be some relief here. As much, I mean, I really like the legacy that Hunzickers have and I would appeal to that in suggesting that more could be done to preserve this area for the buildings that need to be on here. I mean, this is a building that's going to be there for 100 years, you know? Don't you think? Shouldn't we put some more care into that? I mean, it's spooky living next to a vacant lot, you know? But I can deal with that for another year if something could be done. If, see, it would take the DNR doing a study, according to the rules in the, in the zoning ordinance, doing a study to make sure that that would have some effect. If that could be, have some effect, but you could also add extra underpass under Highland, maybe that would help. But in addition, maybe an and/or or both and kind of thing, maybe we can see if there's some way to do more porous or more pervious surfaces so that we're not replacing so much gravel and, you know, place for water to run in. I mean, I like hard surfaces. They look neat and pretty. I'm happy for new investment, cleaner look to the neighborhood. But, you know, we're looking at something, you know, my son said he may inherit this property from me, us. And as I was leaving, he said, Mom, don't. And I said, Go viral? He said, Exactly. Yeah. So, so that's, that's getting close to where I should stop and I could answer more questions and stuff. But I did say, as I went out the door, I said, well, I hope that by the time you inherit it, you can do more with it than have a boat ramp. Because that's kind of where, you know, we've got the lowest backyard, probably in the whole stretch of Clear Creek. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, by the way, one more thing. If, if a, what do you call them? Like a rain garden or rotter retention area were proposed for this area and if it were located back here on this 20 feet, that's, you know, the space that you're supposed to be away from the neighbor, and there's a power pole right here. This is our electrical service that comes this way, goes up this way, attaches to the side of our house. So a rain garden feature in that small of a place or storm retention in that small of a place seems questionable.
Any other members of the public wish to address the board? Please state your name and address, please.
Yeah. I'm Andy Bach. I live at 2818 Oakland, immediately across the street from Marilyn. And I've lived in that residence since 2006, so not quite as long.
Do you swear for me to tell the truth?
Yes, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
So yeah, I'm at the house with the white car on it. I observed about four or five years ago when they rebuilt Oakland, they did quite a bit of sewer work, but it still hasn't alleviated a lot of the storm that's coming down Campus Avenue. Also, for the history of it, I, when there was a restaurant on Main Street that had pictures of old Ames, my actual property used to be a swamp that they would have tug of war on for the campus, and it was the brickwork. So it's where they harvested a lot of the clay for many of the campus buildings. It was filled in by pushing down. If you look at the east side of Oakland, there's quite of, I think most of that dirt got pushed in and my property was filled in swamp. I've not had significant flooding within my basement because I think the land is very porous and so the water goes pretty much around my, my property, even though I don't have some pump or anything. I do think that given all the water that comes down Oakland and down campus, it really will have an impact and it would cause more problems with the, with the corner of this property. So I think Marilyn had a lot more to say, but I pretty much affirm what she said.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to address the board? Okay, we'll close the public comments. Would the applicant like to address any of the concerns?
I certainly sympathize with Marilyn. I, I hear that, I hear similar comments a lot. Anytime we're working on a project, it doesn't matter where it is in the community, that there's always some concerns of the adjacent properties and the stormwater and things of that nature. So we're only able to grade on our property. We're not able to grade on the Property Owners Association to the north or, or any other property. We're only focused in on this one parcel and, and looking at this one waiver, so.
I just have one quick question as you might be able to answer, I can ask Justin Moore also. The two buildings that were removed in that shaded area, do you know what the approximate square footage of those was? I mean, in comparison to what you're putting in as far as how much of an increase there is, is it double the size of what was there?
I'm not sure. It, it's my understanding that it was a duplex and then a single family home. I don't remember if the single family was a two-story or not. I didn't work on the demolition of those. But it's zoned RH, so both of those structures were non-conforming in RH zoning. And so what, what we're proposing meets the minimum standard for the zoning, for the RH zoning.
So on that same property though, that's there, there were three units before, basically a duplex and a single family?
I think so. I'm not sure, Chad. I'm, but I, I haven't, I'm not on the property management side and Marilyn had mentioned Andy. And, and so that's the side that he's on.
Want to share what?
Sure. Briefly.
Yeah. Sorry.
Are you asking about the property right next to ours?
The two, the two buildings that were on there previously, he said that there was one, a single family home, that one, and then the one to the east was a duplex. Is that true? Were they?
I think it was a duplex with the basement and the basement got filled in. Are you asking about the one?
I'm just kind of comparing to what's going in as compared to what was there.
The house right exactly east of ours was two stories and then a walkout basement and they were all single units that had been converted.
What about the one on the east there where the mouse is?
You know, I never was exactly sure just how many door keys there were, but at least two.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Any more questions for staff and just following up with comments from the applicant and the public? It's Justin, can you, my question still is there as far as, I mean, the concern is, okay, this is going to displace more water. The surface might be a little bit different, but it will actually displace much more water, not as far as you know.
So as far as I look back on the property card, the assessor site, it's not very helpful. It does indicate what was there before. There is a gross living area for the duplex that was at 1,648 square feet. And then the, I don't have any information on the single family structure, unfortunately, as far as the footprint goes. In terms of the, you know, the, the stormwater comment, so thi- this is part of a minor site development plan, which is going through review separately through city staff. This component, this conditional use permit is a, is part of that review and it's part of the steps that the developer needs to take to get that minor site plan ultimately approved. The, the Public Works Department, our engineer in Public Works reviews all of our stormwater criteria, Cesar, and then also Liz Calhoun, who's our, in our stormwater area. She, she helps out with that quite a bit. So that is something that they have been looking at through the site development plan process separately. The cri, so, so in that sense, that's who I would have to defer to for anyone that, that had questions. Specifically tonight, this deal's just with the design of that foundation wall to allow any flood conveyance on the corner of the building and then the appropriate elevation.
So what I understand you're saying, there could be additional requirements that need to be addressed concerning watershed and floodplain, plain issues?
But potentially, particularly in terms of watershed, I don't know where, I'm not the, the main case planner on that side, so I don't know where those are at at this point. I know they're still being worked through with the, the developer. So, yeah, from, from my purview, dealing with the floodplain standards, just looking at the, the protection that they're designing into the, the building in that area of the floodplain.
If you're saying the duplex is about 1,600 square feet, the single family looks will be a little bit smaller. I could estimate it to be 1,200 square feet. So that puts us about 2,800 square feet under, under 3,000 square feet. Do we know what the square footage of this three, three units are? I can't quite read them.
Pull that information up here for you real quick on the site plan.
Have to get the readers if I'm going to figure out the size. I'm just seeing, trying to compare apples to apples to see what the difference in the buildings were. That doesn't negate any other steps or address any other steps that might be taken to address watershed and things like that. I'm just kind of looking apples to apples at this point, comparison.
So it looks like for the building area, it's just over 4,100 square feet, 4,152 square feet.
So it is about a third bigger. Approximately. Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? It's time I'll entertain a motion if any member of the board wishes to make one concerning this item.
I'll make a motion to approve alternative number one.
Any second?
Second.
Motion by Zener, second by Bowers. Any discussion? I think I under, I appreciate the concern that's been expressed. I have dealt with watershed issues personally and professionally. Water is to be allowed to flow. That is one of the problems. The issue is where it ends up sometime and what direction it goes. I think in working with the city, they can continue to address those. And I think the overall issue is the creek itself, right? I mean, that's the bigger issue. I think that what's brought forward and we, that's way beyond our purview and scope of what we can address here tonight. But I, I do understand that. I think it can be addressed and I don't think that the size of the building itself is significantly more enough that it would cause that much more difference there. It does need to be addressed how the water then does flow off the building, preferably away from the neighbors and towards the creek more. But that's for, to be addressed at a different, different time and place. So with that, I'll take a roll call vote. Aye.
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 The motion has been approved. Any person desiring to appeal the decision may do so to a court of record within 30 days after filing of this decision. Onto item number three of our agenda. This is a one-year extension of the special use permit to allow temporary yard waste processing facility at 220 and 400 Freell Drive in a general industrial zone. Have the presentation first by the city staff. I'm Mr. Ray Anderson.
Good evening. I was trying to get a location map up here in the screen for you. As you mentioned, it's Freell Drive. It's 400 and 220 Freell Drive. 400 Freell Drive is the, is the yard waste site, which is this L-shaped property here. And then 220 Freell, Freell Drive. During times of heavy use of this site, such as on the free days in the fall, there's a driveway that goes through here that may be utilized as an exit out of the yard waste site back onto Freell Drive. So it's this L-shaped property and then a portion of 220 Freell Drive.
Just note, we are, well, at least two of us are very familiar with this.
Yes, yes. They, they've been before you many times. The, the most recent was in April, April 27th, when they received approval from this board for a temporary yard waste processing site. Again, 220 and 400 Freell Drive in a general industrial zone. And it was approved with conditions. One of the conditions is that it be approved for one year, beginning May 1, 2022 and expiring May 1, 2023. And we have received a letter from Doug McCray, who represents Chamnus Technology, doing business as Green RU for this yard waste site in the city of Ames. And the request is to extend that approval for one more year. So it would be from May 1, 2023 until May 1, 2024. The standards and the findings by staff and the conclusions, none of that has changed from April. The code does allow for a one-year extension of the approval, but then after that one year, they, they would need to apply for a new special use permit. And so our recommendation as staff is for approval of that one-year extension with a few conditions, one of which is that no further extensions of the approved special use permit shall be granted by the zoning board of adjustment. A new application for special use permit shall be required for use of the site as a yard waste facility after May 1, 2024. Nothing else has really changed about their proposal. So it would just be extending it for one more year and then after that, if they want to continue using that site, they'd have to reapply. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from Mr. Anderson?
Not right now.
You guys have any? Is the applicant here this evening? Will you come forward? You have the orange card and that too, Renee?
Natalie.
They mislead me when they put these lists down and.
Will you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name's Lillian Chamnis. My address is 310 Southwest 11th Street, and that's Des Moines, Iowa.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Then I have a question upfront. What is your relationship to the?
My dad owns Chamnis Technology, so, yeah. I've been with the company for not quite a year yet, so. But I'm here on behalf of Chamnis Technology, doing business as Greener U. And I guess I'm here if you have any questions about the facility. I know last year there was kind of comments made about grinding the material and then also hauling material out, which I can say we have done both. But outside of that, I don't really have any comments to share.
That was going to be my only question. That's the only thing I recall that was kind of mentioned was that things were starting to pile up a little bit. I believe we had comments from one of the neighbors. And my comment at that time was just be a good neighbor. I think back in April and obviously there are DNR requirements that are, you have to meet. So as long as you're meeting those. And I would note, I don't see anybody else here this evening, so that was going to be my question.
Yeah, but yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yep, outside of that, I don't have anything else.
Any other questions from any other members of the board?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
As there's no one else in attendance, I will close the public comment section and see if there's any other questions for staff or anything that needs to be followed up with. Okay, then at this point in time, I'll entertain any motion from any board.
Move alternative number one with the clear understanding that this is the last time per alternative number one that we can do this.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Bowers, second by Xena. Any discussion? All right, I'll ask for a roll call vote then. Aye.
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 Hey, the motion has passed. Any person wishing to appeal this decision may do so to a court of record within 30 days after filing of the decision. At this point in time, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Bowers. All those in favors indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Assume no one's opposed, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.